Good evening. The February 10th, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome everyone to the February 10th, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received, for their review and consideration, the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System, or DAX. The public can access the agenda through the school district website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Saturday -- excuse me, the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the committee. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Time Warner Cable Channel 96.96 in Mentor and Channel 96.22 in Mentor and the like. The meeting can also be found on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Mr. Wilson, the minutes?
Yes, we've distributed the minutes from the January 10th Special Meeting, January 13th Organizational Meeting, Tax Budget Hearing, and Regular Meeting. We request approval as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes. Hearing of the public on agenda items? Anyone? Hearing nothing? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I'm recommending approval of consent agenda items 5A-1 through 5A-5.
So moved.
Second. Questions? Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mr. President and members of the board, the Treasurer's Office was once again -- has once again earned a perfect audit from the Ohio Auditor of State. We are happy to recognize and thank the office staff who are here tonight for their continued commitment to excellence. Mr. Wilson, along with Mr. Tuttle, will make the presentation.
Well, thank you. I often refer to my grade card or my test being the annual presentation of the five-year forecast and how accurate I am in my assumptions and presentations. We also have a second set of tests that we have to pass every year, and that is the compliance audit conducted by the Auditor of State's office. And we're pleased to report again tonight, as Mr. Miller had indicated, for the fifth consecutive year, we've received a perfect audit. I'd like to say I had a lot to do with it, but the reality is, it's the fine folks you're going to meet here in just a moment that work so diligently to ensure that we comply with the audit regulations, the laws and the rules, and Board of Education policies. So it's with pleasure, I'd like to introduce our office staff. First, Norm Funk, our Assistant Treasurer, who's responsible for oversight of the daily operations of the Treasurer's Office. And just as a footnote, as Norm's coming up, there's another audit that we just underwent this past couple of weeks, and as a self-insured employer for workers' compensation, periodically we're also audited for our management of that program. And I'm pleased to report that that also was a perfect audit. There were no citations or recommendations on how we administered a workers' comp program. And again, that's Norm's direct responsibility to oversee. Next, our Assistant Treasurer, Debbie Walland. Debbie, up until a few weeks ago, was primarily responsible for fiscal grants management, also is our lead person over contracted services that are offered through our school district. Next, Becky Beeter. Becky works in our payroll office, splits her time between producing the Mentor payroll and one of our customers' payroll, which is the Richmond Heights Schools. And our newest member to the office, Mary Ann DeMichael, has joined us and is assuming a new position in fiscal grants management for the district. Now the pressure's on. Next, Glendine Epperson. Glendine also works in payroll as our lead person in the administration of the employee benefits insurance programs and also in the production of the Mentor payroll. Next, Cindy Furman. Cindy helps manage records for the school district as a whole, and particularly for administrative purposes, both from converting to electronic records and helping to manage the archive records and retrieval of data when needed. Next is Nancy Leonard. Nancy's responsible for accounts receivable and also takes care of a lot of other things involving banking, reconciliations, and booking a payroll. Next is Barb Livengood, and Barb just retired in the past week, was our lead person with student activity management, and is excited to be entering the next chapter of her life, but was a major contributor this past year to our audit success. Jackie Locke, the Administrative Assistant for our office and the person that I rely on very heavily to ensure that I'm supporting the various offices within the Treasurer's Department and doing the things I need to do. Next is Rita McNeely. Rita's part of our Accounts Payable Department and is our lead person in helping to produce our weekly vendor run for the Mentor Public Schools. Next is Linda Sedmak, who during the audit period was also one of our primary people in accounts payable and is now assuming a new responsibility in our Fisher Office to oversee the student activity grants and some grants management work. Next is Judy Willett. Judy's our Accounts Payable Supervisor, which she would love to go back to do. Prior to that, she was our payroll supervisor, and due to an extended medical leave of absence, has stepped back into the payroll role and done a wonderful job of helping to support the payroll department.
Thank you.
And unable to be with us tonight is Diane Williams, our payroll supervisor, who, as I indicated, has been out on a medical leave, but is our lead person overseeing both the Mentor payroll as well as the Richmond Heights payroll services that we provide. So this office staff is the ones really responsible for the award we've received, and we're very proud of them and thank them very much. Stay up there just a moment. You gotta get a picture.
Congratulations to the entire staff. Well done. Very proud of you. At this point, Mr. President and members of the board, we are happy to welcome Mr. Jim Armani of the Auditor of State's office, who will present the Auditor of State Award
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and the President and board members. I wear many hats in the office, but this is one of the fun ones. When we got given awards, it's very positive, and I'm just real privileged to be here. I just met Dan last week, and I'd like to read a letter from the State Auditor, Dave Yost. Dear Dan Wilson, Chief Financial Officer and Mentor Village School District, congratulations. Based on your recent completed financial audit, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that Mentor Exempted Village School District has received the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. This award is from clean and accurate record-keeping and is the true foundation for good government, and the taxpayers can take pride in the commitment to the accountability. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is given to those entities that file an annual comprehensive annual financial report and other timely financial reports filed in accordance with GAAP, as well as receive a clean audit report. The clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain any finding of recovery, no material citations, or material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Once again, on behalf of Auditor of State, Dave Yost, congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We're gonna do something slightly different with our Straight A update. Mr. Lynch is at the Ohio E-Tech Conference in Columbus, so we have a video from him that we're gonna show tonight's update on. If you remember, every month, we're trying to use a different type of technology to give a Straight A update, and this is this month's update.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, I again want to thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the Straight A grant for the month of February. There's been a lot going on, and I didn't want to miss this opportunity, but unfortunately, I am down at E-Tech for this week, so I wanted to use this video to keep you updated on the progress of the Straight A grant. It has been a busy month. I'd like to start by talking with you and give you an update on our professional development. This past month, we had six days, full days, of training over at the Holden Center, where we worked with Kirtland teachers, and every member of our teaching staff at Mentor High School was trained on our new learning management system called School-Agey. These were great days, and we operated under that 50/50 model of professional development, where teachers were given 15 to 20 minutes of instruction and then used the next 30 to 40 minutes to apply that instruction on the use of School-Agey into their specific content area. They were great days, and we look forward to how the staff is going to continue to use School-Agey for the rest of this year and trying it out, and then on into next year with our students and their one-to-one devices. This past month, we also had a great opportunity to work with the Mentor High School teachers on Web 2.0 training. We took advantage of two hours of time that we had dedicated to our staff meeting time and had 11 different sessions offered for our teachers that they could choose from to further their learning and to apply Web 2.0 tools to their teaching. This past Thursday, we were also able to take six of our high school students down to the State House to visit with the governor, the state superintendent of schools, and other area legislators for a Straight A day. During this day, our students had an opportunity to talk with them about the progress of our Straight A grant. Here is a brief example of some of the information that they shared with them.
Think about this. In today's world, where information is available in an instant, anywhere, anytime, and right at our fingertips, we've all changed the way we learn. So as educators, that means we have to change the way we teach.
In a typical classroom, the teacher passes out information. It's passive learning. We want active learning, and we believe that the blended learning model is an active -- we're promoting active learning, that students are an active participant in the learning process.
The Straight A grant is providing some of the tools our teachers need to take action in implementing blended learning in their classrooms, such as renovated flexible learning space.
I think that the room lends itself to varied activities. It helps with differentiation. It allows me to work with groups of students much more easily than you could in a traditional classroom.
Along with that important small group instruction, the new environment encourages more discussion among peers.
Gives them power, at least in their own perception.
Now, I would go the opposite of that.
Giving students the tools they need to become self-directed lifelong learners.
And so the idea is, you get students to think in a way that will prepare them no matter what, and those are critical thinking skills. Those are skills at solving whatever problems come their way and whatever avenue they pursue. They are collaborative skills, because no matter what, we know that students will have to work with other people, and they will have to know how to do that effectively in order to be as successful as we want them to be.
Technology is an effective way to reach today's learners, too. Take this group, for example. All five students working on the same paper at the same time, and they can work together from anywhere, even from home on a snow day.
Did you guys do work yesterday, honestly?
Yeah, we did.
What did you work on?
Um, the entire page.
A couple of things. It allows kids, students, to have choice in that. You want to build into those projects choices, they feel like they're more attached to learning.
So attached to the learning, in fact. They're using our teachers' online platforms to extend their own school day.
We're also, you know, starting to use different platforms online, like School-Agey is starting to come out with our teachers, and I personally think that that's an amazing tool, that we can discuss, you know, class topics and ideas outside of class that we don't have time in, you know, the 45 minutes that we get in the classroom with our teacher.
You can find more examples of what the students shared with the legislators down at Straight A Day on our website, www.mentorschools.net. This past month has also been very busy with the renovation planning for our classrooms. I appreciate you coming in this past Friday to approve the bid process that we went through with awarding the bid to Lakeland Management. We are now working with the contractors to finalize all those plans, and we will begin that process this week. It has also been an exciting last month for Paradigm. The footings are complete, plumbing is being worked on, and electrical work has started as well. Now, you might not see all this because it's buried underneath the foot of snow, but you will start seeing some major changes happening this week and on to next as the steel arrives and that is beginning to be put into place. So by the time we meet again in March, you will see some unbelievable sights occurring on our Paradigm. As you can see, the month of January and the beginning part of February has been very busy. We anticipate the end of February and the beginning of March even being a little more crazy, but we're ready for that, and we look forward to sharing those updates with you during the March board meeting. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone that I can help with?
Please thank Mr. Lynch for providing such a nice recap in absentia.
I might like the virtual Mr. Lynch even better.
You know, I don't want to offend anybody, but that was almost as good as the real thing.
Yeah.
Well done.
I'll pass that along. Thank you. Moving on, on the agenda, Mr. President and members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the agreement between the Hiram House and for the 2015 outdoor education for our sixth grade students. Sixth grade camp.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of the resolution to permanently suspend use of Rice Elementary School at the end of the current school year, the 2014-2015 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner.
Sorry, it's me.
Was it Jenny?
Yeah.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to update you on my Senate Education Committee testimony last week and Park testing issues that I think our students and teachers are having. So if you'll, please give me just a few minutes to talk about that, and I'll be glad to answer as many questions as I can. One week ago tonight, I was able to testify with a group of 12 other Ohio superintendents in regards to the progress of the Park testing implementation in the state of Ohio. Several of us who have worked on project together in the past prepared our statements so that while we had a common theme, we weren't just saying the same thing to the 12 or 13 senators that were present for our testimony. The prevalent message was, overall, that while the Ohio Department of Education and most school districts are mostly ready for Park assessments, Park is not ready for our students and for our teachers. The amount of testing when Park is combined with AIR assessments and district administrator tests is well beyond what any of us who work with students on a daily basis would think is a good idea. It's important for me to mention, and I think most of you will agree, that I'm a firm believer in students being held accountable for their education, that our taxpayers provide for them, and that accountability extends to our teaching staff, school administrators, myself, the state superintendent, and our elected officials, who are charged with setting the laws that impact our children every day. The debate about whether or not we should be even administering these tests is over for the time being. I can't believe that our governor, state superintendent, or other legislators are gonna put an immediate halt to Park or other types of assessments at this point in time. While it certainly would make sense to do so, I believe that we are all moving forward, but I would love to be proved wrong on this issue. The main point of my testimony, which I have shared with all of you and can be accessed on the Mentor Schools website, is that our students are gonna be at a serious disadvantage. The issues Mentor Schools and many, many other school systems are having now does not involve the education of our students, it involves testing logistics. These problems are adult problems, not student problems, and kids are not going to do as well as maybe they should. Their ability levels are not gonna be gauged by what material they know, comprehend, or can answer, but their ability levels are gonna be measured on whether or not Park and Pearson, not ODE or Mentor Schools, but by Park and Pearson, and whether or not the logistical issues we're having have been resolved. We've been administering practice tests for our students for a couple of weeks. While there are some logistical issues within our control, many of the problems have yet to be rectified by Park and Pearson. I will say that our IT department has been attempting to contact Park via emails and phone calls with limited response. We are having less issues today than what we were in our practice last week and even a little bit the week before that. Mr. Porter and I sat in on testing, practice testing going on at Garfield today, and it was this group of students' third round of practice testing, which sounds like a lot, but they were doing pretty well today. The first day of practice testing, 12 of the students, about half, were having major logistical issues. The second time, it was down to three, and today it was just one. So I'm hoping, as we're going through this practice rounds, that it is getting better. We're gonna check out one of the other buildings tomorrow. They're practicing in the afternoon. So I think one of the things that's fair to ask is, what are we doing about it? After the first round of practicing, of practice testing, the IT department, the curriculum department, and myself called and spoke to senior members at ODE about our issues outlined in the testimony, and I won't repeat them here, and while we spoke to them, they tried to, I think, truly alleviate some of our concerns. It was clear through our discussions that the issues were with the testing company and maybe ODE in terms of a failure to act in a timely manner. I did ask about shifting from online testing to paper pencil, and was told we were past the deadline for that and that the state didn't have resources to give us those items. As a result of that phone call and subsequent testimony, I received a call from State Superintendent Dick Ross late Friday afternoon or early evening. He asked that Mentor Schools participate in a conference call yesterday with ODE, Park, Pearson, along with the eight urban school districts of the big city schools in Ohio, and also Centerville Schools, who are in the same boat. Most of the same people that were in the initial phone call were in the group again, and I was able to add two teachers to the conference call as well, because they're in the trenches and seeing, I think, the frustration in our kids and their own frustration. But two of our teachers were in the room, and that was, I think, pretty powerful, because you can have superintendents in the room and you can have IT guys and ladies all you want, but when you hear the teachers talk about things that they're going through, I think that does a lot. So after that phone call yesterday, Dr. Ross asked if I'd call him again. I did, told him it wasn't much better, gave him some alternatives, asked for maybe a reprieve that we halt testing until May. That was, I don't think that's gonna happen. But we're continuing to troubleshoot. I know that there have been questions about opting out of testing, and there's been two documents from the Ohio Department of Education in terms of opting out for tests, and a new assessment guideline just came out on the fourth, which would have been Wednesday, I believe. And if I can just read the first paragraph of that document, this is on the Ohio Department of Education's website, and this is in regards to the opt-out. This is the first paragraph. "Student Participation in State Tests," is the headline. "Federal and state laws require all districts and schools to test all students in specific grades and courses. There is no law that allows a parent or student to opt out of state testing, and there is no state test opt-out procedure or form. If a parent withdraws his or her child's participation in certain state tests, there may be consequences for the child, the child's teacher, and the school and the district." Period, end of paragraph. To me, that's not something that is gonna go over well, I think, with some of our families, and I can't blame them in matters of choice like this. And I think it's a pretty strong message from ODE right off the bat. You can find that on ODE's website. If you want to read the rest of it, it doesn't get much better. Also, yesterday and last night, I did talk to two other teachers, not in Mentor, but in this, in the northeast Ohio area, whose schools are doing paper pencil tests. They're having issues as well, so it's not, I don't think they're off the hook, so to speak. They're having issues with having the right number of tests and the type of tests, so they don't have enough, and they're being told, this is from what they're telling me, they're being told that they might not have enough tests in time to administer. I did talk, when we were, when we were sitting with the kids today taking the practice test, I did like the format. I just think if we can get past the logistical issues, we would be fine. The kids I talked to prefer the online environment. It was pretty user-friendly. It's just the getting booted off and getting started that seems to be at this issue. So right now, moving forward, I think because of logistical issues, our testing window is gonna be a little messy, for lack of a better term. Our IT department has been vigilant about contacting Park and Pearson with limited response. I'm working on a document that I want to get out to teachers and families about testing and that we're gonna have issues along the way, but I don't think it's in our students' best interest to single anybody out or any classes or any teachers. So I would invoke a superintendent timeout rule on a student that was struggling with a test, and if Park has issues that we stopped the test because a kid was having problems, I'll deal with that. That's, that's, makes common sense, I think. My hope is that we get these issues resolved, but we start testing on the 18th, I believe. So we still have some glitches we need to get worked out. Again, I'll call a timeout on some of the testing if need be. I don't want to put our kids in a lurch any worse than it already is. Once testing's complete, and this is one of the things that I shared with the senators last week, is I think Ohio needs to reset in terms of types of assessments, numbers of assessments, and who makes the decisions, because the people that created this problem can't be the ones to solve it. I don't, I think we're past that. Anyway, with, at this time, I'm sorry, I ramble. Anyway, at this time, I'm sorry, I rambled a little bit, but it was something that I know maybe you're hearing about, and I wanted to address it, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you have.
I think this whole testing issue is nationwide, and as a citizen of the state of Ohio, I am just so frustrated that there has been this, I don't know if they're trying to save face, but the whole juggernaut keeps moving forward, there is a complete disregard for the amount of resources that are consumed by focusing on testing and wasting our students' time with all sorts of fits and starts, and that it was not debugged before it was put out. I'm sure that Pearson collected a great deal of money to put together this test.
I believe so. There is some, if I can interject too, there is some legislation pending about a hold harmless that's coming out, I think a vote in the House tomorrow, so we'll have to go to the Senate, but the time's ticking, so.
It's just a disgrace, and I'm embarrassed for the people who made these decisions at that state level, and it breaks my heart that we're forced to try to scramble to meet an impossible situation head-on and use these results to somehow measure our students' growth. And our private school and charter school partners across the state are not taking these, these are just the state of public schools, is that, am I correct in that?
I would like nothing more to come back in March, in March, at the March meeting and tell you I was totally wrong and everything went great. I don't think I'm going to be able to, but I would love for that to happen.
And if people want to see what the content of the test looks like, I think you'd find it very interesting to go to the ODE website or Park and take a look at some of the sample questions, and it's pretty impressive, though.
Right, and you know, and we're starting to hear from other schools, and I mean, this isn't anything that should have caught anybody off guard, it's, I think, the prep work. If anything else, this should have been sort of the dry run, so to speak, for the assessments so that we could work these bugs out in a non-testing, non-pressure-filled arena.
Thank you for testifying on behalf of our students and lots of other districts across the state.
You're welcome, thanks. Anybody else? Mr. Tuttle?
In the school year, the current school year, in these tests, what's the percentage of time that a student's going to spend taking a test? All the tests?
That's going to depend on the grade level and the student. There is some recommendations coming from the Ohio Department of Education that there's a cap of 1% or 2% next year, and we talked about that during testimony, of what does that percent really mean and what does it count? So is it 2% of the school year, is it 2% of the school day? I think that part's going to be reworked, from what I'm hearing, and they're taking suggestions on what that looks like.
Right, and that was their recommendation that they issued last week as one item in the recommendations. 2% of the school year is what they described it as, with the limit of time spent practicing for the test of 1% of the school year. So whatever the number of hours would be, say it's 45 hours, they're allowed to have 22.5, or at least that's what they're recommending of practice.
Right, and I have a high respect for our state legislators, but that's another example of who did you talk to before you came out with that? Because to my knowledge, no educator, meaning teacher, superintendent, curriculum person was ever talked about what does that mean and what does that look like. I think if there are a few educators at the table helping with these decisions, and we're not all going to agree on everything, but I think that would go a long way, I really do.
Yeah, I think they have to have an open conversation, they need to listen to those people, teachers, administration, superintendents, students, input to evaluate which way to move.
Our local legislators have been reaching out on this issue, so I will give them credit that they realize that there's a problem and things need to be worked on, so they were, so the testimony was Tuesday, Thursday, Mr. Lynch alluded to it in his video, was straight A-Day, and down there, a lot of legislators came through talking about the testimony and suggestions, and they were bringing it up to the kids, so they do have a pretty good perspective on what that's like. I mean, no one wants to have to take a test, but there is some validity to it, and again, there is a piece of accountability we have to be in, I just don't think this is it.
Yeah, Matt, you had mentioned some legislation pending, maybe as early as tomorrow.
Correct.
Do you have a sense of possible success or failure rate of that?
It's referred to, I believe I have this right, as House Bill 7, it's a Beke bill, and he's from my old stomping grounds, so I know him, and he sent a survey out asking educators to weigh in on it, and it was essentially a hold harmless bill that if you're having any, no one's going to be held accountable to what we're getting into. So to me, it made a lot of sense, I think that has a possibility to pass, but then we have to go to the Senate still, and again, the clock is ticking. Testing in Ohio can start on Tuesday, a week from today, we start Wednesday, so it's going to have to be fast-tracked. I haven't heard any other states, I don't know if Dan has in his groups or not, but I haven't heard anything lately.
And did I hear correctly that public schools that have had their funding decreased are required to do these tests, but the charter schools that the state is working to improve their funding don't?
Correct, and charter schools, I get a lot less results.
I hope that parents whose children are affected by the testing will reach out to their representatives to, the volume of public input is one thing that can't be ignored by government.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Staff and C2 through C5, all related to Human Resource Matters.
So moved.
Second. Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you, that concludes my part of tonight's agenda. I do have, I will take the lead on the next part if that's okay, as well.
Sure, new business?
Under business for the board, two items. First would be asking for your approval of a resolution to enter into a school district agreement, excuse me, with Under Armour. This would pertain to just the football program at Mentor High School. Mr. Wilson and I went back and forth with them on the terms of the contract, and I think we made a lot of improvements in this, just, I think we were approached because of the footprint, so to speak, that the program's going through, and Coach Trivissano and his staff and the kids in the support group, so asking for approval of that. The second item I would ask your consideration on is to approve a resolution to enter into a land lease agreement with Lake Erie Tower. This would be a cell tower, and it would be located on the grounds of our service building. It would be towards the back of the service building, almost directly back, a little bit to the left, and far enough away from neighbors. And it's a contract, again, that Mr. Wilson worked pretty much exclusively on with Lake Erie Tower, and I would ask for your approval on that one as well.
Just to add on the first one, Under Armour's a three-year agreement with a total value to the school district of $60,000. And for the cell tower agreement, the initial terms, a five-year term with a minimum of $90,000 in land lease payments and the potential for up to an additional $200,000 for subleases.
And the $90,000 is over the five-year period? That's a total?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Correct.
So moved.
Stockton?
Question?
Question?
The cell tower access would be from Hopkins on our property?
It would be from our property, correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's essentially next to two pre-existing structures in the back, there are some garages and things.
For clarification, first motions for the Under Armour agreement.
A question on there, there was some information about some of the other sports teams, did that just not materialize, or is it maybe in the future?
It hasn't yet, no, might be in the future.
Okay.
One of the things I want to make sure, football's an exception because there's not a female component to it, but if we do other sports, I think the girl side should be addressed as a package deal, so.
Okay, very good.
Call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Need a motion on the cell tower, please.
Do we have a motion on the cell tower?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Legislative report. You'll see on page one, I had the subject matter not quite as complete as Mr. Miller's report on what he did last week, but it also includes the list of schools that did testify and worked together with Mr. Miller in his presentation. But I would like to add a couple bullets to what he mentioned about the Ohio Department of Education testing report and recommendations that they were asked to do this in November, they received the charter to go ahead and do this, and they completed, the first week of February, they issued it. And one was the 2% for testing, 1% for practice, but beyond that, they also had some interesting bullets, and I just want to point out, one was, was recommended administrative changes that the administrative, ODE, works together with the federal government to advocate for flexibility in Ohio's testing system. "Closely monitor the first-year administration of Ohio's new state tests and make any changes necessary to ensure that the testing system provides accurate data on student performance in a reasonable way." This is very interesting, now this comes along after no changes, no waivers presented. Another one, "Create models for local schools to increase the efficiency of local testing by finding ways schools may use a single test for multiple purposes." So that's just butting heads, going off of different tangents with their eyes closed, it seems, or their ears closed. Just want to cover a couple of those bullets. There's more of them there, not many, but go ahead and read those, and it's just mind-boggling that they have this focus that's not sharp and it's not well-thought-out. It's disappointing, it's really disappointing to me, and I think I've spoke to that in previous legislative reports, that they just don't listen, they don't listen, they stay above and aloof. So we just need to keep on pushing back and letting them know that we know more than they do, not me, but these guys and you guys, you, not me. So, thank you.
Tom, I'd like to just follow up real quickly, as Matt indicated when we were in Columbus last Thursday, we both had an opportunity to meet with three of our four state representatives and senators and let information for the others, and I distributed to the board kind of the first look at the governor's proposed budget. Over the two years of the new budget, 15, 16, 16, 17, the initial proposal would have us lose $1,825,000 and combine state subsidy and phase out of tangible personal property. But the point that we made is consistent with one that Matt and I use every time we meet with legislators, that we believe the proper frame of reference is the 2004, 2005 fiscal year and school year. That was the time at which the local tax revenues are 12, almost 13 million of tangible personal property began to be phased out, and there were structural changes in the state subsidy program, elimination of the reimbursement for electric deregulation, elimination of reimbursement for exemption of first $10,000 of personal property taxes paid, elimination of school bus reimbursement, and some other reimbursements through the education budget. When we use that as our point of reference, the governor's proposal would have us receiving $9,026,000 less than we did in 2004, 2005. In the second year, we would receive $10,272 less than we did in 2004, 2005. So the combined total for the two-year proposal is to give us $28,325,000 less than we would have received had they just left us alone. And that's our constant theme, is leave us alone. To the extent there's a need for children that need the most resources to be successful in school, that's wonderful for future dollars, but don't take more money away from us.
Thanks, Jackie. I hope people realize that, that's $28 million. We've been fortunate, our enrollment's gone down, our costs have been controlled, but that's going away, that's not available any longer, not when you drop $9 million and $10 million as a second, and you add that to that, $28 million is, this is not right.
So we will, as you encourage us to do, I'm sure we're both going to be very engaged with the process.
Thank you.
Financial statements?
Yes, it's recommend the Board of Education approved a January 2015 financial statements and have them placed on file for audit.
So moved. Stockton?
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner? I'm not hearing well tonight. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And as you had indicated, I will say we're tracking very well on revenues, are performing as budgeted and comparable to last year. On the expense side, our expenses, year-over-year increase is, at this point, 2.3% and tracking to budget very successfully. We're actually underspending budget by almost five percentage points, so we continue to be very careful in our spending, knowing that our revenue challenges are an issue that we need to deal with. Next, request ratification of the investment portfolio for the month of January 2015 is presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approved one interfund transfer presented in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approved the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approved the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approved the student activity, purpose, goals, and budgets presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved. Second.
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And it's recommend the Board of Education authorized payment of two invoices listed in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the role of Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
That completes my items this evening.
Any unfinished business? Finished business? None? New business?
I'd just remind the board that we will be requesting a special meeting during the week of February 23rd. As I'd communicated before, we're in the final stages of negotiating a new risk management insurance package for property and casualty insurance, fleet insurance, general liability, and cyber liability. We're going to be able to hopefully reduce costs or at least offset the increased value of our property and grounds and keep the cost current, but unfortunately, we've not completed negotiations. We also anticipate asking for formal ratification of a change in our medical insurance provider as we've communicated in the past. So those will be items we'll canvass the board and, and see if there's either a 7:30 AM meeting or 5 PM meeting that would work for a brief meeting during that week.
For that week?
Yes.
Okay. So we won't know that date until you?
If, if folks have their calendars want to set in now, that's fine, but if not, we can canvass the board.
What do you prefer?
Is everybody in town that week?
I am.
23 PM is bad for me, as well as the 26th PM. I could do morning any day.
I'm good Tuesday through Friday, so in one of those days.
So preference 7:30 meeting or end-of-day meeting?
I'm clear on the 24th and the 25th.
I'm good on any day, so whatever is the best for those.
Morning's the one for me. We have a preference.
7:30?
Any morning during that.
All right. Good morning, Mr. President. Take. No.
Not, not Monday.
Just that Monday?
Not Monday.
No Monday.
Please. Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday, the 25th.
Wednesday, the 25th.
7:30 AM.
7:30 AM. Thank you.
Killing me.
Good.
Okay. I'm a morning person, but Monday's always hurt. All right, 7:30 at the board office on Wednesday?
Yes.
February 25th.